Saygo, bonsoir. Good evening and welcome to the January 24th council meeting. I have a motion of personal reflection, please. Thank you. Madame Clerk, National Anthem, please. Please stand. Oh, sound. Thank you, Madame Clerk. The acting mayor for this month is councillor Claude McIntosh. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Aqasasne. Role call, Madame Clerk.
Mayor Glenn Grant.
Present.
Councillors Claude McIntosh.
Here.
Dennis Carr. Sid Gardner.
You see.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Carolyn Ebaugh.
Present.
Councillors Maurice Dupell.
Present, Madame Clerk.
Elaine McDonald.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
And Justin Towndale.
Present.
Councillor Edick Bajon sends his regrets, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or amendments? Every none, move on. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull consent number one, please.
And I have a few changes as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We have the addition of bylaw 202214 to accept a transfer of a whining for 10th Street, which means that our confirming bylaw now becomes number 202215.
Thank you, Madame Clerk. Do we have a guest tonight as well?
We do. We have two guests that will be presenting after the business of the meeting is done.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Councillor Gardner, councillor Dupell, all in favor? Gary, thank you. Any disclosure of interest in this evening's meeting? Very none? Have a motion go in committee of the whole? Councillor McDonald, councillor McIntosh, all in favor? Gary. Could I have a motion to dot the minutes of Monday, January 10? Councillor Bennett, councillor Towndale, all in favor? Gary, thank you. Madame Clerk.
So now let me introduce our two guests. We have Jean-Yves, who is a conservator, senior curator at the museum, as well as Wesley B., president of SDNG Historical Society, and they are here tonight representing Cornwall Community Museum, and they will be giving us an update.
Thank you, Madame Clerk. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, councillors, thank you for allowing us to make this presentation this evening. The SDNG Historical Society is embarking on a new chapter in its over 100-year history with a board that is diverse and includes all three historic cultural communities. The society has several projects underway emanating around our museum, and I will now turn it over to the senior curator of our museum, Jean-Yves Le Moine, to share those projects and future plans with you.
Good evening, Madame Clerk. May I have access to shared screen? All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go through this presentation. I was told I've got about 10 minutes, so I will do my best to keep within that 10 minutes. When we speak about accomplishment, I will give you a bird's eye view of what we are planning on doing in the next year. Board diversity, our president already spoke about that. Collaboration and partnerships, it goes at many levels, but our main one is to work with your dedicated staff of Cornwall, the city of Cornwall. We have a great relationship, and simply put, we will never organize any historical activities with the involvement of what I like to call the Three Solitudes, which is indigenous, Francophonie, and British Empire early settlers group. The museum must integrate itself into any activities organized in Lemoore Park and reach out to other groups using the park to maximize its use and provide the best quality of services to our community and the users. The creation of Aqasasne Cornwall and SDNG Museum Network, we're working on that, and also the creation of an historical society, genealogy, and archives council for our whole geographic area. Because when a tourist comes here, a tourist come in our area, they don't look at us as divided different groups. They look at us as a region, so we have to be able to do the same thing. We, one thing we're going to create from this, it's going to be a calendar of event that will encompass all groups and all museums in our whole area. Right now, we're working at the relocation of the UELAC Dominion Branch Archives to Cornwall. We're hoping to be able to have them in January, I'm sorry, in April or June of this year. We have done some changes in our museum already. One of it is we're very proud that we created a research center and also a centralized library in a multipurpose room. As you can see here, this room can be used in different ways. We can sit all about 44 people for lecture series and also in a conference design. In our archives, we've got over 10,000 files on Cornwall, businesses, people, SDNG, of just over half a million, either negative or pictures that are digitized, some are not, in our data bank and also to be able to help the people of David, the of doing any research or in on genealogy or any other media request. We want to become an economic engine for Cornwall while employing metrics to quantify and qualify all of our events. Our goal is to create value-added tourism activities to better serve our community and to strengthen our partnership with the city of Cornwall as well as Aqasasne and SDNG counties. One of our main activity is going to be a celebration of friendship. So we're going to have reenactors around the museum that they're going to set up, so it's going to be May 20th, 21st, and 22nd. So basically, they're going to arrive on Friday at noon, set up, and leave around 4 o'clock on the Sunday. So what's very important here is that our activity, it's going to be all inclusive of all the cultures that were present in 1784. So we're going to have Mohawks, French-Canadian, British, Scottish, Palatine, and also slave, enslaved people will be represented. They're going to spend two nights in the park and three days in Lemoore Park. So that's very important because we're going to travel in time, like I said, to 1784, and so that our visitors will be able to walk through it. They're going to have lots of activities. We're going to have a French-Canadian battle replica right there, so we're going to explain the history of it. We're going to have traditional Mohawk welcoming ceremony. We have a traditional meal of the three sisters that's going to be served to all the volunteers and the reenactors on the Saturday evening, and throughout the weekend, we're going to have traditional Scottish, French-Canadian, British music songs, and also Mohawks, so that people can come through the park and at different times through our activities. They're going to be able really to see what it would have looked like then. Next one is the Queen's Jubilee, June 2. So we are planning a parade that's going to go from the bench, sorry, from the museum to the bench and to come back after. We're going to have the proclamation and beacon lighting ceremony. We're going to have a short, short protocol ceremony. We're going to have entertainment with Mohawk traditional dancers and drummers, island dancers, French-Canadian also, songs, and we're going to have our choir doing the proclamation. We hope to be able to do it in English, French, and Mohawk. We're going to have free refreshments during this event. That's going to be about an hour and a one and a half maximum. So it's going to be something for all the family. Schools will be invited. This is why we're doing it. We're going to start at 10 o'clock in the morning. It's a Thursday. The third one would be a traditional Christmas celebration in Lemoore Park. We know that there is many activities already planned by different groups. All we want to do is to integrate and collaborate with any of them, any of their planned activities, and to try to enhance it with a touch of tradition and history. So like talking about the history of the Christmas tree, how did it come to Canada? Doing family fun things like snowman competition, three-legged race, horse-drawn wagon tours of the park in the downtown core, and to expand our historic Cornwall tour with that wagon so that people can do it during the winter time in the wagon. So we're going to bring them around through the snow. And also, I'm hoping that through partnership, we'll be able to talk to the people in the downtown core to put more lights so that this tour becomes very a nice tour that people can jump in, they can come from everywhere and just sit down in the wagon and just go around and see our beautiful city and our beautiful park. We're looking at also doing a traditional Christmas party at the bench, like an old soirée d'antan, which Chanson Répond in French. Same thing with Scottish, with some Mohawk, also active, sorry, songs and dances. And looking, because it's a Nativity Church 135th anniversary this year, so we're looking at maybe working with them to create sort of like a Christmas concert series with Mohawk, French, and English choir. And sometimes they're going to be separate, and maybe we can do them together, the same song, and then you hear it in three different languages. So again, to show the historical diversity of our area and to be able to share that with people, because some people have never heard those beautiful Mohawk songs, and I can tell you, this is something that is worth listening to. Our historical, historic Cornwall walking tour, a virtual tour. So that's going to be done in two parts. So basically, what we want to do, we want to present the history of our area with all, with complete inclusion. So we're going to start at the back of the museum with the mural. We're going to talk about the Iroquois village site in Saint-Anisette. We're going to, over time, we'll put it this year, when we can raise some funding, to create a plaque to acknowledge that, a plaque for the Saint Regis Village, and one for the arrival of the new settlers. And then, including the museum, the walking tour through the park, the history of the canal system, a stop at the Francophonie monument to celebrate their contribution to Cornwall and their history, and cotton mill, to the cotton mill to relate the history of the great innovations and industrial part of our great city. A guided tour of the Nativity Church inside, so to look at the beautiful architecture of this beautiful building, and again, to talk about the Francophonie in our area. And then I walk back to the museum, maybe adding the jail in there, jail tour. So this is basically what we're looking at. The virtual tour will be populated with over 100 historical markers with pictures and descriptions. With that platform, we're going to create also vintage or heritage minutes that will be produced in Mohawk, French, and English. So you go to any site, you click on the locator, it shows you, let's say it's a house, it can show you the three or four pictures of the house that we used to be, who lived in it, and then we're going to have some writing description of it, and then we're going to have those vintage minutes that will go with that. Upcoming events, so for 2020, 2023, for the, our reenactment, encampment, we hope to do this every second year. So that if it's a great success, the summer, we hope to do it and make it better and better every second year. We're also working with different groups that we're hoping that every second year, we're going to co-host and co-organize an historical conference in Cornwall. So that would bring them, we're already working on one for 2024. It's going to probably be ready to be announced pretty soon. So this is just those type of things that we are working at. Also, last point, it's going to be the construction of an historically accurate porch in front of the museum. So that's something, we're going to do some fundraising for it, but we want to to make our museum a postcard picture perfect type of place so that people during graduation, school graduation, or weddings, they can come and they go on it, and it's beautiful, and that truly represents the history of Cornwall from the early settlers. And that's it is, is it? Was I close to 10 minutes? You are mute, Mr. Mayor.
Most people prefer that.
Your wife.
Thank you, Jean-Yves and Wes, and any questions? Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Le Moine, this was probably the most exciting presentation I've seen at the council table for a very long time. I think you're going to animate the park, and we've been waiting a long time for this to happen. So, welcome to all your wonderful ideas. I think that the events you planned are going to be so well attended, and I'm hoping that people, simple passersby and attendees will be able to participate too. I'm wondering for the celebration of friendship, for example, on the May long weekend, have you considered inviting the community to dress in period costume to, to attend this event?
Yes, we will do that. We are reaching out to many places, many other museums in SDNG themselves. They were invited to come. We know that in Aqasasne, they are already reaching out to Six Nations, Tainanegah, to come also to do this. We want to do this a true celebration of friendship because in those days, people don't realize that without the help of each other, they would have never survived. So that, so this is very important to go back in time, it's going to be a snapshot of that time, really to capture the need of good neighbors and the need of friendship.
So true. I love the spirit and I love your ideas, so full speed ahead.
Thank you.
Councillor Dupell?
You are mute, sir.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Le Moine and Mr. Libby, for all that you do for our community, and I think that this is such a needed needed activities in our community, especially during these, after these COVID times, and be able to celebrate within that wonderful park of Flamborough Park that we have and celebrate our history. Thank you so much for everything, and it's a great presentation. I was so interested in reading the presentation, and I looked very forward to hearing it tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Jean-Yves, en français, bienvenue à notre belle ville de Cornwall. And in English, what was lacking from the museum was the energy that you bring to the museum and the organization that you've done. And I hope that you can put a little bit of energy in Wes Libby. I don't think he needs it, but yeah, the energy is great. Love it.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much, and we just remember, this is not something within on our own. It's something with collaboration, with partnership. Anybody that would like to jump in to partake in this, we are, they are welcome.
And the other comments? Councillor McIntosh?
Yeah, I've had the privilege of being council liaison with the the historical site and the museum and getting to see Jean-Yves work up, work up close and personal, see him work, ton of energy. How you didn't become commissioner of the RCP, I do not know. He's a retired RCP officer, by the way, who decided to stay in this area, and we're blessed for that. One thing, Jean-Yves, maybe you can explain, I didn't quite understand it. Believe you were talking about the museum becoming an engine for Cornwall, why employ metrics? Can you translate that, Bernie?
All right, well, thank you for this question. So very quickly, in about three different points. First of all, we are working at creating one-day and two-day tourism packages with other museums. So some from Quebec, some from Aqasasne, some from SDNG, so that people, we can give them a, hey, you have half a day. This is a package, one day, two days. So try to get people to stop here from the 4-1, and to people to stay here one night. Everything that we do, it's activity-based model. It's an activity-based model. We will be able to quantify the events with exactly cost spending, human resources involvement, number of hours spent by on the activities, create a report on the activities with number of attendees and other stats from those activities, as well as accommodation to improve it for the next time. And also, right now, we're working with our partners in Aqasasne, Cornwall, and SDNG counties in the adoption of a standardized tourism metric, a form basically that will capture vital tourism data from all visitors in the area, so that we have all the same form everywhere. So we capture the same thing, so at the end of the year, we can come back and to say, hey, this is what happened, how can we improve? And then we can all go back to our councils or the county to say, hey, look, this is what we've done, this is how successful we were. And also, right now, I'm working with, we're going to be hosting a one-week cross-training for all tourism and museum summer students from Aqasasne, Cornwall, SDNG, including the En Route Info Centre. We always say that we would like people to stop in Cornwall, but when people goes and go and stop in those info centers, they stop and go talk to the visitor center if they don't know what we're doing. So what we're going to do, we're going to bring all those students for one week, and what we're going to do, we're going to do like a fam tour to familiarize them with all of the, we're going to visit with them all the museums, all the main attractions in our area. And each of those places will give like an hour tour, but also a one-pager, sort of a flyer, to describe, to highlight what is there, and also with a contact that the student can just pick up the phone and call that person, because they will have met that person. So that our first line of visitors is people that like museum. So if they go to one, so you can point them to the other ones in their area, we're all in this together. And whoever succeed from any areas helps the other one succeed also. And also, they all agreed that we're going to do the field training weekend. So during our celebration of friendship, all those students will come in, and we're going to teach them how to interact with people, how to gather those, that data that we need without having to do a questionnaire, just ask him question and just fill it out so that we can all help each other and improve what already exists, but again, in collaboration with the same goal. I'm sorry, it was a long answer.
Thanks for that short and concise answer. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Part of our waterfront plan is to have activities to bring people down to the waterfront. And if your activities don't do that, then nothing will. It's very exciting, and I think we as a council are really appreciative of the efforts put forth by the community museum and yourself and Wes to bring this forward. So thank you very much on behalf of the city council and the city itself. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
We have no delegation, we have no delegations this evening, Mr. Mayor, so moving on to consent reports. Proclamation of Optimist Day with a recommendation that council proclaimed Thursday, February 10, 2022, as Optimist Day in the city of Cornwall, and that council allow the Optimist flag to be flown at 340 Pitt Street. Flag raising for bells, let's talk. With a recommendation that council allow the bell, let's talk flag to be flown at 340 Pitt Street. CPeg from October with recommendation that council approve the following items. Claude and Nicole LaLound at 1150 Montreal Road for Heart of the City funding under Rothmar Holdings Inc. at 26 First Green West. Medical Arts Pharmacy, Cornwall Inc. at 171173 Montreal Road for Heart of the City funding, and 1271450 Ontario Inc. at 711 Pitt Street for for heart of the city funding, and one twenty-seven, one four five zero Ontario Inc. at seven eleven Pitt Street for heart of the city funding. Tender twenty-one T thirty-eight, supply and delivery of various store items with the following recommendation that this tender be awarded to Noble for schedule one, Finds Home Hardware for schedules two, four, five, six, and seven, and to Sani Soul Incorporated for schedule three. Tender twenty-one T thirty-nine, supply of heating, refrigeration and air conditioning services for city departments with a recommendation that this tender be awarded to Doug Gordon Refrigeration from Cornwall, Ontario at the total bid price of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for a period of two years commencing March first, two thousand and twenty-two to February twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four, with the option to extend for an additional one year period. Building and bylaw quarterly report with a recommendation that council receive this report. Fourth quarter non-competitive procurement report recommending that council receive this report. Municipal grants with a recommendation that council approve the financial support in kind and financial grants as outlined in Appendix A of the two thousand and twenty-two grant applicants.
Motion to approve the consent. Counselor Bennett, Counselor Gardner, all in favor? Opposed, Carrie, thank you.
Next is a resolution, truth and reconciliation report. Now therefore be resolved that council in the very near future and the COVID imposed delay and undertake such a modification of the in-person program as can be developed by the First Peoples Group, one that is compatible with the limitation imposed by COVID restrictions, but which fulfills our obligation to acquire the education and skills-based training described in Article fifty-seven, and that administration make the necessary arrangements expeditiously. Now therefore be it further resolved that the achievement of the Article seven fifty-seven, or sorry, fifty-seven directive remain on the unfinished business listing until such time as we have accomplished the activity so designed.
Motion. Counselor McDonald, second. Counselor DePell. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed, Carrie, thank you.
Next on the agenda is our unfinished business listing, and we are looking for a recommend or a motion to receive the listing.
Motion, Counselor McDonald. Counselor DePell, or Bennett, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Communication items, adequate and suitable heat bylaw with a recommendation that council receive this report as presented, and that furthermore, that the proposed adequate and suitable heat bylaw be approved.
Motion, Counselor Gardner, second by Counselor DePell, all in favor? Oh, was there questions? Counselor McIntosh.
Yeah, is Mr. Bray with us?
Go ahead.
This time here, good evening, counsel.
Okay. Do you get many complaints about people lacking heat?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have a stat show that we have on average about works out to about one a week. That doesn't mean we get one every week, but you know, sometimes two, then we don't have any for a week or so, but it averages out to about one per week during the winter months.
Okay. I pass this by law. Do you have staff, sufficient staff to carry this out?
Yeah, so this is an extension of sort of our property standards by law in our vital services to some degree. It'll just be a little bit more efficient in actually using it. So it'll just a better tool. We'll be able to do this under the municipal act as opposed to the Building Code Act, which is traditionally the way property standards works. So we're already fielding those calls as it is now. It's just it's a an additional tool for our officers to use.
Yeah, well, okay, you get the call and what, just give me a quick walkthrough. You get to call your, the office and what takes place?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor. Generally speaking, our officers do a very good job of communicating with the landlords and are able to resolve most matters in this way. However, there are occasions where an increased enforcement would be required. So, you know, if there is not compliance that is occurring, then this would permit the officers to then issue an order requiring it to be done if the communication doesn't work on its own. And if it is not followed through, then it permits them to have the work done on the owner's behalf, and then we would recuperate those costs by by putting it on their taxes if need be. It's not the ideal situation, but it provides us a tool with being able to to ensure that our that our residents get the adequate heat that they need.
Yeah, I can't imagine going without heat in this kind of weather, but I guess it does happen, and you know, we have a humanitarian responsibility to look out for these people. Okay, that's, that's good.
Counselor McDonald and Counselor Ebert.
This is a very welcome addition to our services to our constituents. I note that you suggest that this process, if we adopt this, it's going to take less time than the ordinary property standards procedures, because there's an appeal process built in into that. So can you tell me what kind of time differential there is going to be? Like, for example, in the, if it went through property standards, just how long can the process be spun out as opposed to how quickly it can happen if we simply make it a matter of the bylaw that part of the vital services?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the way it would work if it was a property standards matter is there's fourteen days, plus we have to allow five days of service, and that's through registered mail for it to be deemed served. So there's that, you know, a little more than two weeks there. And they have the opportunity to do the work if they don't, or they have a option to appeal the matter. So the amount of time it takes to set up at the the appeal, have the hearing, then it's in the hands of the committee if they want to either extend some time. So it it's hard to put a round number on it, but it it sort of depends a bit to some degree on 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 the on the committee's decision. So it's not an appropriate method when we're dealing with heat. That's why there is a provision in the municipal act to to kind of bypass that typical property standards approach, and we could deal with it more efficiently. So if the officer in their conversation, you know, may give them twenty-four to forty hours to do the work, if not, we'll get it done. So to answer your question, and the long it could go anywhere is from, you know, possibly almost a month to maybe a couple of days. And that that's kind of the ideal situation. But I'll just add that our officers right now are doing a good job in in having those exchanges with the landlords to get the work done. But this tool will definitely come in handy for certain situations.
For sure. I I think it'd be a lifesaver. So I commend you for bringing it forward, Mr. Bray.
Counselor Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Bray, for bringing this forward, and very happy you've seen this on the agenda. Question, though. I'm reading here, you know, this bylaws to address any complaints for faulty or defective heating appliances. However, I know of many cases within our community of individuals who have inadequate, I guess, temperature or heat in their units that aren't necessarily due specifically to the actual appliance itself. It could be to improper insulation or windows and doors, even harder situations of, you know, three unit buildings where one unit controls the temperature for all three units, things like that. Would this bylaw possibly address some of those other issues? There's a specifically for a furnace that isn't working, rather than, you know, a landlord that won't replace windows and doors and it causing sort of this a similar issue?
So the the window and door portion of that, unfortunately, that would still have to go through the property standards route. However, the other matters as far as the furnace itself and the the thermometers and the the thermostat, pardon me, that is something that we're we're gonna be able to to proceed under this bylaw.
Okay. So then, so the windows and door situation, that would just go through the the regular process, and it it may take longer since it's not, it's sort of escalated like in this process, but it's still, it can still certainly be addressed. Okay. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion? Opposed, Carrie, thank you.
Going back to the proclamation of Year of the Garden. The recommendation is that council proclaimed two thousand and twenty-two as the Year of the Garden in the city of Cornwall.
Motion, Counselor McDonald, Counselor Gardner. All in favor? Oh, sorry, Counselor McDonald, sorry.
I'd just like to speak briefly to this, Mr. Mayor. I I want to commend our own Horticultural Society, who for years have been helping the community build gardens. They they do so much work handing out mulch for free at the landfill every year and just promoting gardens generally. Now, in their letter, I think, though, there's something I wanted to highlight, because it doesn't show in the proclamation, and that is an invitation to all the citizens of the city, all the homeowners and renters to participate in this initiative by painting the city red through the planting of red flowers this year. So I hope come spring and summer, we'll see the city just blossom into red flowers everywhere. Now, I do have a question, but I'm not sure that somebody can answer it, but the answer might be on the city website. I didn't look. We do have some community gardens, because thanks for group to groups like Transition Plus Gardening has been an ever more increasingly popular activity in the city. How does a person get a spot in the community gardens? For example, there's one down on the waterfront. I think just a little bit south and east of the Francophony Monument. Is there a mechanism whereby any apartment dweller can attempt to get a patch of land there in that community garden? Now, I just throw the question up, but if nobody online can answer it, I'll look for that to show up on the city website, maybe.
Madame Cao. You're on mute.
I thought he unmuted it. I don't, I don't think we have dedicated spots for residents to be able to plant a garden. We do have, as you said, the community gardens. We can take it back and inquire with staff and follow up with an email.
Okay, because they do look like there are subdivided patches of land in that community garden. So, thank you.
All in favor? Opposed, Carrie.
We have no new business motions this evening, so moving on to bylaws. We are looking for bylaws two thousand and twenty-two, zero zero eight to zero fourteen, inclusive listed on the agenda that are being presented to council for adoption.
Motion, Counselor DePell, Counselor Ebert. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Before, before you go on, I, when I was talking earlier about a new guest, I was talking about the person sitting behind you, Madame Clerk.
So it's my honor and privilege to introduce you to our new deputy clerk, Janelle Mallion.
Welcome, Janelle.
So she is learning hands-on this evening on how to conduct a meeting.
Good.
So now we are at the reports from standing advisory special and had out committees of council, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor DePell.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything from standing committees, but I just wanted to send remarks to Ms. Mallion and congratulate her on becoming our deputy clerk. I think it's a wonderful addition. I think it's a her and our Madam Clerk, Minelle Vivek, will make a great team, and I was very pleased to see the announcement. So welcome, Janelle.
Anyone else? Moving on. Madame Clerk.
So we are at standing advisory special and had out committees of council, Mr. Mayor, if anyone has something to to bring up.
Let's look like.
There are no new notices of motion, so we are looking for the confirming bylaw to be adopted, Mr. Mayor.
Motion. Counselor Bennett, Counselor Ebert, all in favor? Opposed?
And before you adjourn, Mr. Mayor, I just want to announce that we are having special meetings this week and next week. So those are for the budget process. They are being held on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, tomorrow, on Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, next Monday, January thirty-first, and if we need a fourth one on February first of next week, they all are being held from three P M. to eight P M., and they will be televised by your TV. And our next regular meeting is on Monday, February fourteenth.
Counselor DePell.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, through you to Madame Clerk. I'll be joining approximately about four o'clock each day.
Duly noted, counselor.
Motion to adjourn. Counselor Gardner, Counselor Bennett, all in favor? Opposed, Carrie, thank you very much for a good meeting. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.